I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. I should acknowledge that we're missing Tommy Sisk this evening. And we do have Gary Light joining us via Zoom. Gary, could you just state, I believe you are calling in for medical purposes? And if you could just identify approximately your location for participating in this meeting, please?
Yes, I'm calling in from Baltimore, Maryland for medical reasons.
Very good. Thank you so much. And with that, if everyone could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and that takes us to adoption of the agenda. If I could have a motion to adopt the agenda or any changes?
I shall move.
Thank you, Ms. Ritter. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. Or is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That takes us on to our two sets of minutes to adopt. If there's a motion or any changes to either of the sets of minutes.
I'd like to clarify my comments at the end of the April 14th meeting. April 14th?
Yes.
No, I was not at that meeting. I was busy.
Yes, you're marked absent in minutes.
Where is the other one? My concerns were regarding sod farmers, claiming to be sod farmers, but really they were just collecting. They were in a constant perpetual state of leveling their property with filter.
I see, and that's on page?
That was happening in Falkirk County. There's some issues with that. Page four.
Okay. In the roundtable discussion?
Yes.
Okay. So is staff okay with that clarification? Very good. So do we have a motion to adopt the minutes with that change?
Make a motion that we adopt the agenda with that change.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins, for making a motion to adopt. Is that for, that's for both sets of minutes then?
Right.
Okay, so that's the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Very good. All right, that takes us on to the first public hearing of the evening. Special exception 24-11-01, Hopper and, I'm gonna get it here, Bodine or Bodine? Bodine. TM number 14-21A, ADU. Ms. Summers, would you mind to queue that up for us, please?
Thank you. The applicants have requested a special exception for an accessory dwelling unit for their property located at 13337 Crestville Road. It's identified by tax map number 1421A. Their property is owned agricultural and it is 155.73 acres in size. The proposed ADU is for their mother. It is roughly around 768 square feet, which is compliant with the limitation of 1,200 square feet and is roughly located about 117 feet from their main dwelling. During this application process, we found where the main dwelling had never obtained an operational permit from the home department. They did have their final building inspection, but then never got their certificate of occupancy. During this time, during the application process, we got all this resolved and they have their operational permit and their C.O. in hand. V. dot commented that the proposed use does not add any additional traffic volumes and they offer no comments. And then the health department commented that their septic was installed for a five-bedroom. The main house has three bedrooms. And if they wished to tie into the existing septic, then they would need a modification permit to do so. There was questions regarding the well, but the owners had the water asset back in February and it was cleared for potable use. We'll make one note, the applicant is present. A second note is that the board of supervisors will hold a public hearing on this specific application at their June 2nd meeting.
That's correct. I think it had been pre-advertised due to lack of a quorum last month.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Ms. Summers.
You're welcome.
Is there anything you would like to add at this time, Ms. Bodine? Very good. All right, with that, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on special exception 24-11-01, Hopper and Bodine for the ADU. If anyone has any comments to make regarding this application, now is your opportunity to do so. Is anyone here to speak to the ADU application for Hopper and Bodine? Very good. Seeing no one in the courtroom wishing to participate, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing on the Hopper and Bodine special exception and turn to my fellow commissioners. I think this is.
You know, I went over there and, you know, I just, I really actually felt sorry for the petitioners that they had like one issue after another that totally out of their control. You know, it seems that, you know, they complied with every regulation. I can't see any problem at all with this.
Mr. Shuland?
The only thing that caught my eye, I mean, as long as everything's in order as far as the septic and the water, no issues with this whatsoever. But it just caught, it caught my eye that it mentioned Falkirk County in their title work. Somebody's using border plate language and snuck in. I just thought that was interesting.
That is interesting.
But I think this is what the ADU is for.
That's good. Mr. Atkins?
I think it's a good fit and I like using an ADU for this type of process and of the building for their mother. And I think that's a great, great view.
Henry?
No questions.
Yeah, I don't have any questions either. It checks the three boxes we would typically associate with an ADU. So I think it's a very thorough application. Do we have a motion in regards to this application?
Miss, I've been answered.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Light.
Question, I may have overlooked this. I know there was a comment in the staff report that if they chose to connect to the existing septic, they would need a modification. Wasn't clear to me if that is the intent or if that's feasible and if the intent is to build a new septic. Do we have information on that or do we have to clarify that?
Would you mind to use the microphone, please, so he'll be able to hear you? Thank you so much.
No, we're talking to the health department right now, working that out. We have two options.
Okay, so you're gonna go either way?
Yeah.
Either is feasible?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. I agree that it's a valid application.
Thank you, Ms. Bodine. Any other further comments? Motion? I'd be welcome at this time.
I move that we recommend approval for this special exception application to the board supervisors during next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Shuland. Do we have a second?
I second.
Thank you, Ms. Ritter. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Gary. All right, so your next stop will be at the board supervisors' meeting coming up very quickly. Thank you for coming back. Sorry, sorry, we had to cancel on you last month.
Still work, they should have been.
All right, that takes us to our second special exception of the evening. Boy, the names are getting me tonight. Could I, could I have a little help?
Ms. Rimaciana.
I would never have guessed that. I'm so glad I asked. Rimaciana, special exception for a single dwelling in HC zoning district. Ms. Summers, would you mind securing that up for us, please?
Pursuant to 1736A, the applicant has requested to allow a single-family dwelling in the Highway Commercial Zoning District. This property is located at 11761 Lee Highway in Sperryville, identified by tax map number 3722B. This property is 1.04 acres in size. The existing home was built in 1963 and therefore a legal non-conforming use. The previous owner had begun remodeling the home prior to obtaining the proper permits. The property was then sold. Now the owner would like to correctly finish that work that has taken place, including an addition. With the non-conforming status currently, the owner would only be able to add 50% of its current fair market value and only 50% of the gross floor area. With that combination, their proposed remodel to fix everything would not be permitted. It would go over those 50% rules. This structure has only ever been used as a home. The health department has no opposition to the request, nor does the Rapid Water and Sewer Authority. As the use will not change, V. dot commented that this would not produce any additional traffic. The applicant is present and again, the board will also hold their public hearing on this on June 2nd as well.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Summers. Is there anything you'd like to add at this time, Ms. Rimaciana?
Yeah, I think I'm okay. I just want to say I'm basically trying to right what was wrong and just kind of what was already there is what's gonna stay there. Hopefully I don't have to hear him, it's already been put up here.
Very good. Very good. Thank you for that. And so at this time, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on the Rimaciana single-family dwelling in Highway Commercial Zoning District. If anyone would like to speak on this application, now is your opportunity to do so.
My name is Karen Hunt, Jackson District. The applicant purchases property in May of 2024. Staff has indicated the property while in a highway commercial zoning district has been in residential use since 1963 and that the previous owner expanding the building footprint without the proper permitting. So the special exception application seeks to expand the structure. The back of the house will be an extension. And staff found only one other example of a special exception that was similar issued for residential use in highway commercial zoning. That was in September 2009 to convert an office to a residential use. So since it is rare that we consider this type of special exception residential in the highway commercial, I would just urge the planning commission to consider some sort of conditional language that goes with this that is specific to this application to make it clear that it's an exceptional circumstance. The applicant indicates in the special exception application that the house will continue to be a single-family residence, that the addition will be integrated as part of the house and not divided into separate living areas. And so just a suggestion, that might be appropriate stated conditions. Since this is in a highway commercial zone and we have commercial lighting standards that are, that we are, and that we're discussing implementing residential lighting standards for new residential buildings, it might also be appropriate to consider a condition that addresses down shielded lighting with whatever the applicant does to do. She references that a little bit in her application just to see if we can get it a little closer to the dark skies initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this application? All right, seeing no one else willing, wanting to speak on the Rimaciana single-family dwelling in Highway Commercial application, fellow commissioners, what do you all think?
You know, I thought, I thought it was brave of you to buy the house and it looked to me like you were doing a lot of renovations and I'm really glad it's not just gonna be empty. And I'm really glad that you're continuing to live there and I hope you have a wonderful time in Sperryville.
So I guess you wouldn't just purchase with your eyes wide open? I mean, you knew?
I'm sorry, would you mind to use the microphone? I forgot to ask that earlier.
I mean, you knew that this work had been done to the property illegally?
I did not know it had been done illegally.
Was the property listed for sale?
Yes.
On the market?
Yes.
With a real estate agent?
The real estate agents did not disclose that.
So this property?
And neither did the owner, previous owner disclose that. It was only during our permitting process that it was uncovered to me.
So I'm looking at the photographs up there. You can see that stirred dirt all around the property. And so when you basically, I'll use the term, it was kind of under either active or pretty recent dormant work on the site. And you knew it was owned highway commercial?
I knew it was owned residential commercial.
You thought it was residential?
Yes, that's, it was advertised as residential commercial.
And your intent going into it was to make a residence here?
Yes.
Did you get a mortgage on it?
Yes, a construction loan to do the renovations and then roll into a commercial loan.
Did you look at the appraisal?
Yes.
Did you find out that it was highway commercial?
I don't recall, honestly.
I may have a conflict here. Let me just ask you a question.
Okay.
Who's your lender?
It's First Bank and Trust.
Thank you, I don't have a conflict. Okay, good. Just wanna make sure. So had appraisal done, and appraisal always lists the zoning of the property. And you didn't read it and you found out after you closed on it that you was in this situation?
Actually, I found out, not after I closed. I actually found out when we finally got the permitted, the engineer and draw and submitted for permitting.
So that was before or after you settled?
After I settled.
So you did know about, I said, you didn't find out any of those until after you settled that you had issues?
Yes.
And is this gonna be owner occupied?
This is gonna be occupied.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, I'm planning to live there.
Are you a resident of the county now?
Yes, I am.
Are you employed in the county?
I'm not employed in the county.
You're not?
Employed in Orange County.
Okay, that's all questions, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yep. Is this addition that you're adding on to it, is this just gonna be one residence? You're only a living minute?
Yeah, me and my cat.
And your cats, okay.
I assume it doesn't exceed 50% of the existing building we would be though, right?
It does exceed, that's why we're here.
It does exceed? The addition does exceed? The first round with the fisher was kinda like that.
It exceeds the 50% of the market value and of the gross square footage.
Gary says to why the 50% of the current fair market values in there, but I think that might be something to discuss during, when we go over other things later. I made a note of that. We'll talk about it again later. I have any questions?
Do you have any trouble with downward shielded lighting?
No, not at all. And I have no problem keeping it non-occupied as well.
Well, I would just say, I think it will come as a great relief to the people that live in that part of 211 to have the construction complete on the house and to have the bare dirt seeded and to have someone living in the house that's the owner occupation. So I do think it is, it's sort of a strange retrofit, but it is, it is not the first strange retrofit we've been asked to look at. And so many of the buildings in that highway commercial zoning are still residential. And what I hear mostly from people is they kind of like it that way because they don't want it to become the next Pigeon Forge or, you know, highway, very commercial tourist trap area. So that's, I thought it was a good application. I was, I was surprised that the transaction had taken place and I have a lot of sympathy for you for trying to right the ship. I'm sure it was a lot more than you thought you were taking on.
Yeah, I knew it was gonna be a project. It's just a bit more than that, so.
So, and are there any, Mr. Light, do you have anything to add in regards to this application?
Yes, I do, thank you. I think Ms. Hunt raised a very good point and I don't mean to be too skeptical or paranoid, but I think the concern that I have is that if we approve this as a special exception and it's built out from this larger scale, how do we prevent a future purchaser from reverting to their viorant use as a, as a, as a commercial area, which to me, we would actually now be more feasible because the structure is built and larger and we could be, you know, creating another one of these incremental encroachments. So I do believe we should be, I'm not quite sure what the mechanism to do this is, but I do believe it should be very clear that this is, you know, really almost seems like it should be a rezoning. But although I'm sure of a rezoning, we can prevent future viorant use this being reconverted to a commercial use and that concern is me.
But she could do that, she could have a commercial use right now.
And I don't think we would rezon this because it would be spot, it would be spot zoning to make this residential.
But could, could this expansion be done under, under the commercial, under the, the commercial zoning? Would there be additional?
I see Gary nodding and said yes in the back of the courtroom, so I'm gonna say yes.
As long as you don't run afall the minimum yard requirements, you can do anything you want.
So that was the answer. Minimum yard requirements are still in place and other than that, you could do what you wanted.
And are, and would those, are we, are we circumventing those minimum yard requirements with this?
No.
Exception? Okay, thank you. That addresses my question.
Do we have a site plan that shows that we're not minimizing, not violating anything?
I do have a set of construction drawings in the office.
But, but it doesn't show, does it show the setbacks professionally done? So it's no, absolutely, that we're not violating any setbacks exactly. I mean, saying yes is one thing in the audience, but having a professional, you said you had engineers. Did they do a site plan for you of this? Do you know what I'm asking?
Yeah, they did do a plan. I don't know if they have that, that was in the permanent application. Right, and I don't believe there was any encroachments. Because I remember reviewing that as part of my.
But we don't have it tonight.
No.
We could make it a, a condition for a recommendation of approval.
Or a recommendation.
Well, that, that, if there aren't the proper setbacks, we would recommend denial.
We don't want to see some right now.
Well, there we go. I guess, you know, they can't both simultaneously exist at the same time. So if the setbacks are there, we would recommend approval.
Yeah, that would make me a bit more comfortable, given the concerns previously expressed. I just, I mean, this feels very good and right for all reasons that have been described, but it also feels like it's a spot that we've had these kinds of incremental changes and I certainly wouldn't want us to unwittingly create a situation that increases the likelihood of that.
So, you know, this doesn't go to you really, but it goes to the godfathers who wrote the zoning in the county. And they basically looked at uses and areas and said, some uses you can have in areas and others you cannot. And the most, probably the most restrictive area is the conservation zoning where you can't do, you know, commercial activities, permitted uses that you may allow to do in ag areas. And then you move to ag and same way there, some more uses around. But, you know, when we, when they got down to doing the highway commercial, they said, hey, highway commercial is gonna be a limited amount of it in the county and that's where we want commercial activities to occur in. And we really don't want residential there, but we might allow it. So we're very particular about allowing commercial activities in ag areas and conservation areas, whether it's a home-based occupation or whatever, and industrial uses pretty much only to industrial areas. So we're very restricted to allow commercial uses in residential areas. So why don't we consider and not pass over that we should pay the same respect to the commercial areas where you don't allow residential uses there? Because there's, you don't see residential uses along busy commercial areas. Like you don't see commercial uses, I mean residential uses in the bypass in Warington and they're not permitted, just as not permitted around panic in these highway commercials. So we're being kind of laissez-faire here and saying, okay, yeah, it's one-time thing. But do we look at the integrity of this highway commercial area? You know, we always talk about, you know, revenue, future tourism and all this and this is where we say it should happen. You know, this is where we should, should say it should happen. And residential use can pretty much happen in any area of the county. Conservation, ag, it probably covers 89% of the county. And we're saying there's 10% of the county, 5% of the county, that, hey, it should be commercial. Probably 2% of the county. So we're gonna take away commercial, are we gonna take away this commercial use and allow residential use here? That may impact other people wanting to do commercial here. Do you want to come in and do a commercial next to a residential house? That, the people next door, I think, food, the old food pantry is right in there, close by there.
They're moving.
Huh?
Yeah, it's moving, yeah.
So do you wanna, if you want to come in there and buy that and have a, you know, commercial use, whatever it may be, and you may need a proper car and, you got a residential property next to you now. That's gonna impact your ability to do it. And so are we taking away from the integrity of the commercial area there? So that's.
But there are other residential properties.
Well, you know, they are absolutely grandfathered. They are absolutely grandfathered. In fact, this, this thing here, how it happened, I don't know. I mean, you know, here it is on the main road. It's going on and I think, I don't know. I think maybe the former owner was a county employee, maybe. I don't know. So how did all this happen? Why wasn't a cease and desist done on this thing? I mean, it was in the plain open. It wasn't here, up Kid Brown Hollow or someplace in the back road, you know, you didn't see it. Here it was. And this, and then all this stuff happened to this lady here. It's just mind-boggling. We could do a little mini-series here if you have a, have a local TV. That is just crazy. So it's a lot to think about here. And if we're gonna go down this path and approve this, we need to think about this. And I think we need to have site plan and look at this thing very closely and not, you know, throw it out there and pass it on. Because this does set a precedent on everything we're allowing to happen if we go down that path. Now, she can come in here and do this and I believe she can have an Airbnb here right now, right? It's in a highway commercial area. She can build this to residential standards and run an Airbnb there and have a residential use for an Airbnb, but she can't live there. So that's an interesting little tidbit here on this. So it's.
Yeah, but I need a place to live. But I need a place to live is the only problem.
Be creative and invent yourself like you want.
Well, and really, everyone, I think, you know, that lives, and there are a lot of residences still through that stretch, would much rather have a neighbor than a visitor, different set of visitors every weekend.
Yeah.
And those houses through that stretch are pretty close together. They don't have generous yards. So I hear what you're saying, Alan. I maybe would agree with you if it had ever been used for a commercial use, but it's always been residential.
So you go down the street from here, look at plan, at future plan. You go down the street and look what was done with those couple little houses. You got the jewelry store in one. It's very nice. That's truly an addition to the Sperryville. You got the property next to it. It's ready for another little commercial use. So, you know, if you're, wanna have small business, there's opportunities to have small business. So, you know, if you're, wanna have small business, there's opportunities to have small businesses in Sperryville. And you don't have that much opportunity for small businesses throughout the county. So do you want to toss this out? I don't know. It's just something specific.
I think there are currently three or four properties sitting vacant and available for rent throughout the village that have been available for rent for months, so I, I don't think there's a great human cry for space that hasn't been there. But I, I mean, I understand what you're saying and I, I appreciate your eye to the future planning, but I just think in the context of the village as it exists at this time, residential use is probably the least impactful use of this parcel, and it's the historic use of this parcel. So I, I don't, I have to say, I'm struggling to understand the aversion to this application.
Well.
And wonder if others share it.
Can I pick up one, one part of this? Because I don't a hundred percent agree, but I think I get it, and I think the question is, given that this area was zoned highway commercial with the purpose of encouraging that kind of use, now, and given that there are other residential uses there, how then grandfathered, are we not now, by allowing this, how would we prevent any of those other grandfathered residential properties from also coming in and expanding in this way? I mean, how do we single this out? Because it almost sounds like the argument being made is, well, this particular stretch of highway commercial really shouldn't have been highway commercial to begin with because it's residential and we like it low-impact, but it was zoned highway commercial for a reason, and to me, that is, that is the vision for how this land will be used in the future. And while I'm, I'm not sure, I mean, this is, like we've all been talking about, it's very unusual. I do feel like there are some risks around this that we haven't fully explored.
Well, there are a number of empty buildings along there. Honestly, I think having somebody in this building is a, you know, that has been empty, is an all-around good thing.
In the short term, we're in the zoning business, we are in the long-term vision of the land, and yes, we don't want, filling abandoned buildings is generally a good thing, but, you know, there is zoning for a reason, and to, you know, we can make that case on any abandoned commercial property, well, let's just let somebody live in, because that's better than nothing. But, you know, that's a little, I think to Al's point, that's a little slack and lack of laziness when it comes to, you know, having zoning.
Another item here, is this in floodplain? Have, did you get surveyed? For a lot of properties up down through there, are, are very active floodplain areas. So, is this in a floodplain? Did your insurance, uh, when you got an appraisal done and you closed on your mortgage, there was issues?
It was not in the floodplain.
Yeah, yeah.
Because the floodplain does cross onto that side of two-eleven when you come out, when you go down through there to, on various sides. And it's a very active flow in the floodplain designation. I would like to see that, you know, too, to verify that, because there's a lot of mistakes that have been made on your settlement, purchase, all that, and, you know. And I would really like to see that. If you had an engineer do work on it, it's not hard for them to determine the panel number.
Yeah, if I may, just, just to, maybe just round out my thoughts and my other comments, I do sympathize with this applicant, but it's also another example of where, by just starting something without approval, something that you might not approve if they sought permission first, would be approved. And, and I hate to put ourselves in that situation where we, you know, obviously there was, there was a transition here, but, you know, I don't know if this purchaser would have purchased it if they hadn't done the, the floodplain work. So in a way, you know, we are recognizing and encouraging that, to a degree that, again, makes me uncomfortable. It feels like that's part of the reason that we are kind of moving this quickly, when in fact, that should be a reason for us to look at it more critically than I do.
Well, I think our challenge tonight is this is on the board's agenda for June.
That's tough. I don't think we've got enough here to do the approval. I think at the very least, we need to see a survey that illustrates the setbacks professionally in the floodplain on it before we can really have a, a correct discussion on whether or not it conforms to the highway commercial requirements. And other concerns we have, that, that house location or building location survey will provide us.
Anybody else? Would everyone prefer to hear this more next month, or?
I think, you know, the, the addition was begun. It's there. Is your argument that she should remove it? I mean, what's the?
My, my, my position is that nobody's known anything about this during the whole time, from first shovel that was, dirt moved, whatever that was, two, three years ago, whatever. And now it's been a sale of property under unfortunate circumstances. And we don't know if the setbacks exist with, with what she wants to do. We just need to not make sure we don't make additional mistakes that's gonna come back at some later time.
But now, Michelle, you have drawings, is that correct?
Yeah.
And do they have the setback?
And I'm sure, and if I would have noticed any setback issues, I would have obviously pointed that out.
But they, were they done by an engineer? If I, you know, somebody took a tape measure and did it, and I, I want, it's too many mistakes have been made on this, and also, the floodplain, we, this looks like it's not in the floodplain?
Yeah, this house is not.
I'm wanna, I'm, I'm sit on the loan committee of the bank, and, and it's amazing how many times that's wrong by the elevation. And, you know, right there by that, it's twenty-five feet out, maybe something like that, plus or minus. The property lines are not shown on that aerial photo, so. And the Sperryville zoning maps, flood maps have changed a number of times in the last fifteen, twenty years. And if anything I'm said is incorrect, please tell me. I'm not against approving this, I just wanted to prove it with the right of knowledge and treat this correctly so that maybe no more problems come up with this property and with her. I'm not against this, I just want.
A simple condition can be added to comply with the required setbacks.
I, I have a set of conditions that I've written down that I, I hope, we can craft it either way. We can craft it as a motion to recommend denial if these aren't met, or to recommend approval if these are met. So we can craft it either way, but the three things that I've heard, that I've captured, are a professional survey done by an engineer to show that there's adequate setbacks, a map of the property, a current map of the property showing that it is not in the floodplain, and downward shielded lighting. Those are the conditions which I have heard. And I, I think, I understand that those are valid concerns and I understand wanting to see them. I just don't know that we need to be the ones to see them when it's advertised for the board in June.
This, this problem started years ago, when this was allowed to go on every month and being built without permits. This problem didn't start with her, it started years ago.
Yeah.
And now she owns it, making payments on it every month. And I'm, you know, I know she's got something next month, but I don't think it's a hardship to say she's gonna be in front of the board in August or in July instead of June. And for us to lay our eyes on it, to educate ourselves on the exact situation that exists, so that things are not overlooked and left out. So.
Yeah, and if I may, but those conditions don't address my concern, which is simply that this, we're being asked to allow for additionally to get another grandfathered property or use that is not really intended by the current zoning. And I don't see a way, and maybe this is speculative, but I don't see a distinction between this and any of those other grandfathered properties that could come in with the same request, except perhaps that if they did the right thing and came in first, we could say, no, please don't do that, and in this case, we're saying, well, somebody went ahead and did it, so retroactively approve it. And that's, it's very relevant, I think.
So we have an open public hearing that's still going on, I'm.
We're closing the public. The public hearing, we're in board discussion.
Board discussion, yeah, okay.
Or commission discussion, sorry.
Well, I would make the motion that we actually accept the application on the basis that it remains a single-family residence, that there's downward shielded lighting, that a professional survey with the setbacks are provided to the board of supervisors and a, and a correct map of the property, showing that it's not or is in the floodplain.
I'll second your motion for purposes of discussion.
So discussion process now? I, I don't think this is good planning, and like I said, we don't need to rush this, I'm not against this application, but I think the set of eyes here, all of us need to see this, and I know we're gonna have additional questions once we sit, and I don't want to lead this to interpretation of other people between now and I can include in the board supervisors. I just want to do my job, I want to do it correctly, and I want to do it professionally. And I don't think we need to rush this. Like I said, this, this thing has been developing for years. I'm talking about thirty days to look at it correctly and address it correctly. And I hope that we can approve it then, engine, and she can move on with what she wants to get done. But if there's setback things, then we know about it.
I would just say, I, I just, I understand what you're saying and your frustration that this has been an ongoing issue apparently for a number of years. I, I just don't know what distinction there is, whether this commission examines all of those attendant documents versus the board supervisors and our staff examining those documents. I appreciate that you want to make a thorough recommendation based on seeing everything that you've requested, but there are times when we do move things along conditionally to make it more convenient and to honor the, the notices that we've already put out for the June meeting. So I think the board is capable of fielding the rest of these details in this application with the assistance of our staff and the conditions that we've set forth.
I'm simply asking to do the job I took a sworn oath to do.
Me too.
Madam Chairwoman, I think.
Yes.
With, with due respect, I will not be able to support this motion because of the reasons already specified. I don't think the conditions address this as a zoning matter. I am quite concerned that this is an expedient to deal with something that was done improperly and I just can't afford it.
I guess, Madam Chairwoman, you call a vote, see how the cards fall.
Yep.
And we'll go from there.
All right, so, uh, this is the, my, the one thing I was going to ask, Ms. Ritter, is did you want to put a number of years on the single-family dwelling use, like similar to how we do for some of the other things that we see? Like, three years? That it would be a single dwelling in perpetuity seems maybe a bridge too far, considering it's a highway commercial.
Well, but is, is the applicant may want to live there for her entire life?
When she can, that's with this, but, but the question. For a minimum, for a minimum.
Aren't we, aren't we just, aren't we just approving the, or going to approve the additional size or the, or the, 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 the exception to the fifty percent rule? Is, can we just deal with that by narrowing, if we, if, if the commission chooses to go forward, isn't that covered by the narrowness of the decision around allowing the additional expansion?
Okay. Well, if, if no one else thinks that's important, I'll go ahead and leave that, and, and we'll take a vote. All those in favor of sending this to the board of supervisors with the conditions enumerated by Ms. Ritter, please say aye. Aye.
No.
No.
No. Was that, is, is, is that, can, can you interpret that?
Yes, I can interpret that, that the motion failed.
Okay, all right.
So that leaves us with having to dispatch with this application and aware of the other, if there's an alternate motion?
I make a motion that we table this till the next meeting in June and request that the applicant bring back a professionally done, survey the property, locating the proposed, the current improvement and proposed improvements along with the delineation of the flood area on the site. And Mr. Gary Light, do you have anything to add to that?
I'm trying to, if, if I, if I might suggest with, in that, that, this, maybe we request that staff give us a little more clarity on the use, the current uses of the surrounding properties, so that we can kind of get clear on this, a little bit clearer on this question of, you know, is this really more of a residential area that should be residential, even though we don't want to rezon it? Or if it's a surrounding property even more commercial? So I would like to see, for our zoning purposes and our use purposes, a little more articulation of the surrounding uses. So I'm gonna be at the end, but.
So, uh, my original motion, I guess I will amend it to include the delineation of the uses around the property. And also, on the length of time that the house has been vacant, I'll verify it or provide it, and we'll consider this at a June meeting. House location survey, floodplain delineated, uses around the property, and if this property has been vacant for a period of time.
So there's a motion. Do we have a second?
One second.
I will second that motion.
Does that include your setbacks? That, that will be on the.
The engineered survey.
Who's second do we take?
Oh, we took Gary Light's second. Thank you, thank you. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No opposed.
Thank you, Steph. So we'll see you back here next month.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, that takes us to the special exception twenty-five dash oh-three dash oh-two, Sperryville Schoolhouse LLC, owner and Rising Water Brewing LLC applicant. Ms. Summers, what do we have for this one?
Before we start, I'm gonna excuse myself a little concept here.
Okay, very good. Rising Water Brewery has requested top rate of brewery pursuant to one-seventy thirty-six F and one-seventy sixty-seven E. This property is located at the old schoolhouse at one-two oh-one-eight Lee Highway. It's four point one-two acres in size and it's zoned highway commercial. The proposed brewery will be located, located in the auxiliary building beside the old schoolhouse. Rising Water Brewery is a family-operated business utilizing a three-point-five barrel brewing system to craft small batch beer. They plan to brew and serve their beer on-site. They planned to occupy roughly three-quarters of that building. Brewing will occur on the backside of the building and the front half will be customer area where beer, wine, and limited food will be served. The hours of operation that the applicant proposed are Monday and Thursday, 1:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., Saturday and Sunday, 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Currently, there are 59 parking spaces in front of the schoolhouse, an annex, and two handicap places. There are 15 parking spaces behind the schoolhouse for employees and an additional 22 overflow parking spots in the grassy area. The Rapid Lake County Water and Sewer Authority commented they will consider their request after the county has issued a special exception permit. They see no reason why they could not issue a permit, but they wanted to wait until the county, if the county approved it, to see what the details of the permit would be. The Health Department forwarded the application onto the Office of Drinking Water. VDOT's first comments came back with numerous items that needed to be addressed after the applicant's worked with VDOT. They have no objection, but did state if they had a special event to make sure to get a land use permit for special events to ensure adequate traffic control. Staff has recommended the following conditions. Any large event should obtain a VDOT land use permit, special events, to ensure that adequate traffic control is provided by local law enforcement, compliance with the Department of Drinking Water and the Water and Sewer Authority. All carriagists must be on-site and compliance with DABC.
Thank Ms. Summers. And the applicants are present. Do you have anything to add at this time?
We are present.
Nothing to add at this time.
Nothing to add. We're happy to address any questions.
Very good. All right, and with that, I'll.
Madam Chairwoman?
Yes.
Can I actually ask a clarifying question about the application before we begin?
Yes, very good.
I may be, maybe I'm, I don't know. It seems odd that the applicant is not the owner, and this is a zoning matter. So can we, am I missing something there?
Would you care to address that?
The owner is here with us, and they signed off on the application. We're renting space from them.
Is that proper structure for a zoning request?
I think this is the same way that Pendrewid was permitted, wasn't it?
Yeah, we see this kind of thing all the time.
Pendrewid was permitted similarly. Yeah.
Yeah, I'll just add Josh Savvy, Piedmont District. My wife, Rachel, and I own the property. I signed the, the application, so we're, we're fully in support. Just while I have the microphone, I'll say, in terms of the staff recommendations, we found them very reasonable. We've already been in discussions with the Water and Sewer Authority and addressing any concerns to obtain an applicant, or to obtain a permit. I spoke with the Office of Drinking Water this week. They have no concerns with the change in use and will be revising our, our permit accordingly.
Thank you. All right, does that answer your question, Mr. Light?
Yes, thank you.
Very good. And you're welcome to be seated while we have the public hearing. All right, and with that, I'll open the public hearing on special exception 25-03-02 Sperryville Schoolhouse LLC, owner and Rising Water Brewing LLC applicant. Anyone that would like to speak in regards to this application, please come to the microphone and address the commission by your name and the district in which you reside. And no time limit. I mean, we ask you not to talk for more than, more than five minutes, seems reasonable. Anyone wishing to speak?
Good evening. Darren Black, Hawthorne District. Definitely in support of the proposed new entity. Quite a few entrepreneurs here in our presence this evening that have taken the time to bring different venues to the county that are not only beneficial to us as residents, but also to visitors. So just like to reiterate my support for this new endeavor.
Would you mind to repeat your name for the record, please?
Sure, it's Darren Black.
Thank you very much. I had trouble hearing it, so I always worry about when we make our notes that we capture everyone correctly. Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes.
Sorry. I'll be Karen. Karen Hunt, Jackson District. Actually, wasn't going to speak to anything, but Gary Light raised a point that I just wanted to kind of mention. So we do have an applicant and an owner that are different. And on this particular application, and I'm sorry I didn't catch that earlier, they're both LLCs. And so on the signature page, I, well, both of their penmanship is pretty good. In these instances, should we also be requiring, like, the name of, like, with the PATC tourist home special exception? We wound up going through kind of a similar thing where we had to get an affidavit because the person who completed it, I don't, you know, their application wasn't, the person who was supposed to be signing it wasn't a board member, and so I'm sure everything is okay here, but just going forward, it probably would be a good thing for clarification. That's all. Thanks.
Sounds good. Thank you, Karen. Yes.
Hi, James Keen. I live in the Piedmont District. I live on three, I live at 3739 Sperryville Pike, right in the village. So I wholeheartedly support Casey and Robbie and what they're doing. You know, they want to have family here, they want to work here. That's great for the community. They're great people. And there's no, I have no concerns over a brewery in there. I will be there. A lot, probably, because I can walk there and not have to worry about it. So I just want to say I support them wholeheartedly.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
I'm Bob Traffin, Piedmont District. I live in Sperryville. I also support the brewery. I think it's the right, a right use in the right location. It's right at the center of the town and be a benefit and a good thing for the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? You all must be here for the transient lodging discussions later.
Hi, I'm Shane Carr, and my wife, Barrett, is here. We live at 36 Battle Run Road in Washington, so we're town residents. And, and, and yes, wholeheartedly support Casey and Robbie. And I think, as, as James stated earlier, right, it's great to see people come back into the county and start businesses who have family here, belong history in the county. So we're, yeah, very supportive of this.
Is it possible also to have the record reflect, like, the number of people who are here supportive and let them raise their hands? Because we've got a big group here. I'd love for the record to reflect that.
By putting your comments on the record, that really helps us to capture it accurately.
Okay, great. If everybody could raise their hand if they're supportive. How many we got here? Six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17. I got 19? You guys can check my math? All right, 19 other members of the community are supportive. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's great. We should put that on record in the rapturous community. Unite.
Hi, my name is Melissa Schooler, Jackson District. I'm here with my wife in the Jackson District, and we are fully supporting Casey and Robbie's application.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? This is the only opportunity to speak on this application. If there's no one else that would like to speak at this time, I will close the public hearing on this Sperryville Schoolhouse and Rising Water Brewery. Enter into the public commissioners.
I have one comment, one question, yes. Would this possibly have any impact on the water usage of the, of the surrounding neighbors and so forth?
I'll let you all speak for that. Would it impact the water availability or use of the, of your neighbors?
Can you, I couldn't hear the question.
My question was, well, your, excuse me, your usage of the water for the brewery, will that have an impact on the, on the surrounding wells and so forth that are your neighbors?
I don't, I don't believe so. It's not like constant water use, you know? We would, you know, use water to brew and then, you know, it's not like you're brewing constantly, and it wouldn't give the time for the water to replenish. And it's on its own, like, the schoolhouse property is on its own well, so.
Thank you.
And is there any capacity cap contemplated for the current plan that you have in place?
I mean, yeah, the space is kind of limited to no bigger system than what we have proposed, so.
Max balances.
I think the max we could probably do in like a year is like 500 barrels.
Thank you. Anyone else? Kids, where do you, Al? Well, I'll, I'll just tell you all. I mean, my, my concerns haven't really changed much from when you initially spoke to me about your plan for this property. And the main ones we discussed were impacts on the neighbors that live across the river, across the street, behind your business. But it sounds like you're orienting your business toward the front of that property. It can be very bare in the winter when there's no leaves on the trees. So I don't know that being on the other side of the river screening is necessary, but I mean, it's something to consider. And you said in the application minimal events, but there's not a number. And we, I mean, minimal to you could be 20, and minimal to me could be three. So I think we should really set a number on what minimal means as well.
Is there a particular number you have in mind for that?
I think, and I had forged, as you all, the Pendrewid application, and I thought that that was a good model for you to sort of emulate. And I think their cap was three or four. Do you all remember?
I don't recall off the top of my head.
Yeah, what's, did you have a number of, that in mind? I mean, what did minimal mean to you?
Are you talking individuals, number of events per year?
Events per year.
And Madam Chairwoman?
Yes.
You actually, I may, you actually touched on what I raised in my hand. I think similarly, the Stanford recommendation that refers to quote-unquote "large events" is similarly outlined. And I don't quite understand that recommendation. I was going to ask, did that impact? Because I do think, you know, both the number and scale of these things would be kind of worth considering. And while I am for, this is another of these applications that I would point out, because it specifies things like hours of application. If we go forward with a recommendation of approval, I would strongly urge that we include the descriptive condition, substantive descriptions of the use that are in the application, such as hours of operation, as condition of the permit. So we'll introduce some additional touches.
I'm also curious what the definition of event would be. Is it private parties? Is it?
It's your application, so it would be really up to you to tell us what you would be doing.
I mean, we want to have a community-based business. So I've had a lot of ideas about things, hoping to be family here. We'd love to be able to have birthday parties and things of that nature. But we'd also love to have community events for Sperry Fest every year, things like that as well. And we don't want to restrict ourselves and put us in a small box where we can't have those sorts of events. So we want to make sure those definitions are clear.
Right. Well, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, you have your needs met in terms of what you believe you need to do business, but that the county also understands what we're permitting, when we permit minimal events. So I do think we need clarification on that.
And Madam Chair, this, this goes a little bit back to the ownership question. Because of the configuration of this property, you know, there are events in the surrounding area. I think one distinction that would easily be made, and I would recommend consideration of, is indoor events versus outdoor events. I mean, you can have a birthday party, you don't know what the space is really like, but, you know, to me, that is another, if you start expanding this to outside uses on, and again, the boundaries of this property aren't clear, and the schoolhouse property is often used for events, which again, I'm not opposing, I think those are a good idea, but I also think just as the applicant wants to protect our flexibility, we want to protect this from becoming bigger than anybody in that sense.
So I, I guess, you know, I would suggest that in terms of events, there, there are a number of by right activities that can take place at the schoolhouse. You know, we have a restaurant that is permitted by right that holds a number of indoor events. They have a patio, there's outdoor events. In my mind, I don't see this to be a whole lot different. If they didn't make the alcohol themselves and they serve food, this would be a by right activity.
I understand that, but this is not a by right activity. This is brewery. And I think if we were talking about having a restaurant with all of that expansive by right use, this cuts to another concern I had, and this is not a surprise, I told you all this initially when we sat down, is how do you make sure if the restaurant is full and busy and the brewery is full and busy, that there's adequate parking for everyone, accounting for all the tables and parking spots? I think we really need a, a plan that shows that. Because as we all know, that is a very busy intersection where you are located, and we want to make sure that everyone stays safe and that no one's parking on the side of 211 in order to be able to, to do business on your property. I know you want them to be safe as much as we want them to be safe.
Yeah, absolutely. And I guess what I would say to that is, you know, we have a number of tenants at the schoolhouse property, and they all coordinate really well with us. We don't have overlapping events. We have a calendar for the building, so we know what is going on when. If the golf course is holding a tournament, the, the restaurant isn't having some big event or something like that. So I, I think we are very cautious about it. And of course, I, I assume there is some sort of rule in terms of VDOT, if you're expecting X number of guests, you need to obtain this, this license that is, is being requested.
Right.
Is that license only, is that required only at outdoor events? Or how comes that, what's the trigger for the VDOT? Is that just based on numbers wherever they're located?
I, I'm not 100% sure, Mr. Light. I would seek clarity from them on that comment.
Yeah. I mean, I, I would appreciate that. I think to the point, I believe that was the applicant, or maybe it was the owner speaking, but I'm sorry, I can't totally make it out. But, you know, I think the point you make, that there's already a patio and a restaurant there, is actually supportive of the point we're making, which is, you don't want to need, yes, we understand you need to coordinate, but in terms of the county perspective of the scale of activity, there's already a vacuum on the space and all of that. So how does this impact if they don't have a similar layout for where these events would be on this property? I think for this schoolhouse, you know, it is very clear. And in fact, for, for a special use, I think the bonus is even harder to point out of the orientation of the use so that, because it's not by right. So I, I do think, I'm, I'm hoping to be able to support this, but I definitely need more clarity on the site usage and the, and the numbering nature of events and how we're going to make sure that we're all, you have the flexibility you need and need as the county representatives have the protections we're looking for.
Sure, absolutely. I'll defer to the applicants in terms of the number of events. What I would just say is that in terms of the property itself, the applicants are renting, you know, the space that was previously occupied by the Cottage Curator and a space behind that that's used for the brewing that's currently occupied by Flourish Root, which will move into the main schoolhouse building. In terms of outdoor space that's being rented, we're talking about that small little sort of postage stamp lawn that's in between the main schoolhouse building and directly in front of the Cottage Curator building. It's not that the ABC license would extend to the lawn where the farmer's market is or anything like that. So we're talking about a relatively small outdoor space.
Thank you for that clarification. That is, that is helpful. Thank you, thank you for that clarification. That is, that is helpful to me. And so, so maybe this is visible on the plan, but is it, is it all to the riverside of the path? Or is it even less than that? Is it really, maybe there's something in the exhibit that you can show this, I don't know, Michelle? Is there anything in the packet that shows the actual footprint of the rented space? I don't know that I saw that.
Yeah. Well, on, on this map, it's actually like plain north of the building. So between the building and the park, like asphalt space, there's a grassy area. And that's the only outdoor space that would be used.
So this is, I think, precisely to the point that for a use like this, and again, with all due respect and support, and I would like to do it just like everybody else does, I do think we need to have this, this clarified. Again, to, to do the work that we've been asked to do on behalf of the county. So I do think some, some minimal concept plan where, you know, the location of these activities associated with the brewery is important. So these things to all just blend together and become, you know, one big event mall or something.
Part of why I didn't include the outdoor space explicitly in our application was because we do still need to go through the ABC approval process and not permitting process. And I don't want to guarantee we're going to be in X space when they say we can only be in Y space.
Right. I think what we would be looking for would be the upper end of what you would propose or what may be approved. We will, I, I am speaking for myself, I don't mean to speak for you, Mr. Light. I would want to know, if, if the area that you are, that you envision for this use is approved for this use by, by the board that you need to get their stamp, what would the number of tables look like inside and out? And how many people would generally be able to use that space? And what would be the parking accommodations that would guarantee that people that are there to use that space could be safely accommodated? And, and that goes back to our very first discussion about the challenges of, of this property. And I, I think that's a, a fair ask on our part. I think we would be remiss if we didn't, you know, get an idea of how many people, you know, gallons, people, the scope that you'd like for your events and how everybody's going to park. And if the answer is that the building owner controls a calendar and we, well, you can show us what the calendar looks like and what you've been doing, then that we guarantee we will handle the parking for these events and it will not be an issue. And if it should exceed what we have, we promise to reach out to VDOT and get the land use permit and proceed accordingly. And if, and if that's your proposal, we can, we can look at that. And I think that's a reasonable way to proceed. But I think we need, you know, gallons, people, parking, those kinds of things, but dialed in.
Cause I, ma'am chairwoman, if I could add to, I think one, one factor here that is mitigating in some way is, you know, there is the trail. And I think that we would expect a fair amount of foot traffic to these kinds of events. And that, you know, kind of presents both some opportunity and some kind of other considerations. But at any event, I, I feel like I'm being more difficult than I intend to be in my commentary. But I, I would like to see these things clarified so that we're all, you know, some public on the board.
Thank you, Mr. Light. Anyone else have any comments?
Do I? I mean, I, I'm, I'm inclined to agree with Mr. Light. I think we have to have some sense of how many events, how many people you think will be there, what will happen. Of course, it's, you know, how many cars do you think there actually might be? Cause the overflow would go over, I'm sure, to the other side of two eleven.
Um, that was part of VDOT's initial concerns, that they did decide they were no longer concerned about. If that, that's what you should be.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I think you just need to figure out event-wise what you envision. I don't see a birthday party.
If that's really a deal breaker for you guys, we can happily agree to no more than six per year.
Birthday party inside is an event.
Right. We can do six outdoor events, not to exceed.
I, I think really that, I think that this should be, that you should take a pause because this is your future business that you're crafting here.
But we've already been working on this for months and months at this point. And we'd love to get moving on this.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we had previously talked to you, Christine, and we were fine, like what Pendroid had proposed or was in their thing for events is amenable. I mean, to, to be fair, currently, you know, in the next year or two, besides participating in events that already go on, we don't plan to host any events in the near future, so.
If I may, if I may, I'm, I'm sorry, it's not our business to write the application. If that was your intent, those things should all be written in the application. You may have been working on this for months, we haven't been. So please, please recognize that we need to add this bill in this before I'm going to recommend that the town is very little set this.
And if you'll take, if you look at the Pendroid application, you'll notice there's a lot of handwriting on that application before it was approved. There's a lot of handwriting on there for a reason. It's because the commissioners and board members that approved it had questions and concerns and requested details, just like we are tonight. It isn't that we want to say no, it isn't that, you know, we have a preconceived notion. It's that we want to give you the opportunity to propose the business that you want. And we need the opportunity to make sure that that's an appropriate fit. So what I think I hear is that we would like additional information regarding gallons, events, capacity in terms of people and parking capacity and how those challenges will be navigated going forward consistently.
We had a conceptual site plan of where any outdoor events would be held. I mean, I understand that description that was just made about what was rented, but, but we don't really have visibility into that. And I think that is a kind of a minimum expectation for some kind of group such as this.
So that would be the other thing, the site plan. And it doesn't, do I understand correctly, Mr. Light, that it doesn't need to be complex? It can just be a printed out photo with like X here, X there. So, you know, we're not asking you to put a bunch of money and hire an engineer. We're just asking you to, to show us approximately what you're intending to do.
Absolutely. So that we can understand that, you know, how the, how the scale of the use configures with the space in a way that does seem to be protective of the neighboring, right, you know, neighboring properties, et cetera. So again, yes, absolutely not, I'm not talking about anything architectural or, or, you know, I mean, rough to scale, but conceptual, showing the major features of the property and where these different use areas would be, I think is pretty much the minimal standard for a, a, a special exception use or an exception system.
Okay. Um, I'm just, specifically, you mentioned gallons, what are you?
So the max, max gallons, or not max gallons, you mentioned barrels.
Yeah.
Max barrels. And then what a barrel means to you. Um, because I'm sure there are bigger and smaller barrels.
It's, it's a, yeah. A barrel is thirty-one gallons.
And then events, what, what you, what your proposal for events, how many people, duration? Are you going to have amplified music? Are you going to have any music? These kinds of things your neighbors will want to know. The capacity for people, roughly where you envision tables to be particularly outside? How many interior tables you envision? And then appropriate parking planning, either on its own or in conjunction with the building's owner for, for the capacity that you envision on a daily basis and for events and how you're going to handle those details. Did I miss anything, Mr. Light?
Um, no, you may have added a few things. But I, I actually, Mike, you may have a suggestion that could simplify this. Going back to my earlier comment that I think we should specify the operating parameters in the application. Would the three point five barrel brewing system ultimately be the constraining fact of the amount of barrels you're going to use in a year?
Absolutely. It's the biggest that will fit in that space and we will grow into it. We do not intend to brew at three point five barrels tomorrow, this year. It's meant for us to grow into and be there for a little while.
So it may be that, you know, we don't need belts and suspenders and duct tape on all of these factors. But I think understanding that scale question and maybe it's enough to know what the, what the expected output of that. Barrel system. But, but anyway, I think, again, these handles that, I think, I think our concerns are probably coming through pretty clearly and how you kind of put some bounds around what you're doing that gives you ample space and addresses these. Does seem to me that there's plenty of room to get there here.
Miss Ferguson, number of people inside, isn't that pretty much the county telling them how many people they can have?
Ms. Summers?
Ms. Leeds.
Ms. Trump?
They don't, I mean, I, I'm not the real official. Spoken out way too much this week. Yeah.
That's somebody that provides, that's somebody.
I mean, is it remodeling? Yes. If they do remodeling, yes, for change of views or whatever they have to do. They're going to have a design every time.
So I mean, I think those are just a few details to, to refine and chase down. And we can meet back next month and, and finish our business, I think. Do you have any questions for us or does anything seem unreasonable that we're asking you to submit to complete this application? All right. And with that, do, do you all want to handle this with a vote or just move on? Just stay with it till next month. We'll see you back next month. Thank you all very much. Let's take a brief five-minute recess to get through. And we're doing so well.
Are you mad? Are you mad?
But notice, we haven't told anyone no. We've just said yes and maybe. All right. That takes us to our last public hearing of the evening, special exception twenty-five dash oh three dash oh three, uh, the Hubbard accessory dwelling unit. Ms. Summers, if you don't mind walking us through this one?
Sure. The applicants have requested an accessory dwelling unit for property located at sixty Headwaters Road pursuant to one seventy thirty-six A and one seventy sixty-two G. The property is eight point nine seven acres in size and is zoned village residential. It is proposed to convert the area over the existing garage to the ADU for her daughter to live in and she will reside in the main house. VDOT had no objections to the request. The health department reported the site had an existing and approved application with them to install a subject system and drain field for four bedrooms. The system will be adequate to support the proposed dwelling with a mass of eight people, six hundred gallons per day water usage. The existing well has a water flow rate of twenty-five gallons per minute, which is sufficient to support both structures. Staff has recommended one condition be added to the permit if approved. And that's no future application for a tour, so may be solved for this ADU. There were a couple items, staff has pointed out. The square footage of above the garage is over twelve hundred square feet, so we will need something to limit that. And the access to the second floor of the garage, I'm, I'm not sure whether the stairs are inside or outside to the second story, but the building code will require an outside access for the second floor.
Thank you, Ms. Summers. And would you all, applicants like to say anything at this moment?
So I, I couldn't, I didn't, I couldn't quite hear one thing. I'm not really sure what she said, but.
She said outside access.
No, I heard that, but was something before that?
The, um, the square footage of the, above the garage.
Okay.
If taken off the plans, it comes out to one thousand three hundred and seventy-seven square feet and an ADU is limited to a maximal of twelve hundred square feet.
Okay, so the, the structure's already there. It's, the garage is there and the building overhead is already there. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't know how I could make it go away. What's there was already there. As far as four bedrooms, we are only trying to have two. It's just going to be her and then my grandkids when they come visit, who are grown. One lives in California and one lives in Woodbridge and, uh, what else? The well, they, we have a T-Gen well. There's no, no problem with water. And I was told before I could even come here to get the drain field guys to come in, so that's what I did. So I think I can answer any of your questions, but there's something else she said I didn't hear.
She just said you have, you have to have, like, we are ready.
There's already a door and there's actually, cause I talked to the man, I talked to a man that takes care of my brother. And I was like, we're going for a thing, I would like a driveway. He said you already have a driveway that goes to that back door, took that, takes you right into the structure. He said it's just got grass growing over. He said, I can fix that. It's just got grass. So I'm, I already have a good foundation for that driveway. And then there is a set of steps that come from the garage itself up right into the, you know, the area.
Very good. Well, let's go ahead and hear from the public then. Does that sound like the best? The best thing to do will be to open the special exception, the public comp, or the public hearing on special exception twenty-five oh three oh three, the Hubbard application for accessory dwelling unit. Is anyone here to speak on that application?
We didn't have the support that the brewery had.
This is the, this is the only opportunity to speak on this application, so if you'd like to say anything about it, now's your chance.
Should have some beer.
They all went to have a beer.
Apple butter, if it comes from Chester Gap, apple butter is a secret from the Baptist church.
All right. So if no one's here to speak on the Hubbard accessory dwelling unit, oh, I'm sorry, Karen, there you go.
Karen Hunt, Jackson District. The applicant purchased the property at sixty Headwaters Road in September of twenty twenty-four. There is an existing three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath dwelling in addition to the separate two-story, four-car garage. The application, which is dated March and April of twenty twenty-five, lists the owner applicant addresses in Front Royal and Strasburg, not the subject property. Throughout the application, the Front Royal address is listed as the owner's address. The prior family apartment provision of our ordinance that preceded the current ADU provision required a justification for family use as well as a minimum two-year occupancy period before any rental to non-family members. While that is changed with the current ADU, at a minimum, there should be a requirement that a property be the current legal primary residence of an owner before an application for an ADU is considered. And the justification for seeking, seeking the special exception is for a family need. One seventy dash sixty-two G of our ordinance states that an ADU cannot be more than twelve hundred square feet. The Commissioner of Revenue property card notes the area over the separate two-story, four-car garage is twenty-eight by fifty-two feet, which would be one thousand four hundred fifty-six square feet. Uh, the sketch on page thirteen of the application notes a one-foot difference in each direction, twenty-seven by fifty-one at one thousand three hundred seventy-seven, but obviously both of those are over the twelve hundred max. Our ordinance also states that if such living space is in a structure other than a single-family home that includes other accessory space, then it must be served by a separate entrance to the outside of the structure in which it's contained. And there can be no access connection between the ADU and the balance of the structure. It appears from the sketch on page thirteen that the access entrance is to the first floor of the garage and that the access stairs noticed as steps from the garage are interior. It's unclear if there is an existing exterior access. The twenty twenty-four sales description for the property noted that it include a sizable detached five-car garage with electrical throughout plus an additional second floor that can be renovated into a living space accessible from both levels. There appears to be a discrepancy in the number of bedrooms being proposed. On page thirteen of the application, it shows a sketch for two bedrooms, two baths and a room identical in size to one of the bedrooms noticed as an office. But on page seventeen, and again on page twenty-two, there are notations on site plans that say proposed three-bedroom apartment over. there are notations on site plans that say proposed three-bedroom apartment over garage. And then the VDH permit for the separate septic drain field, uh, to serve the proposed ADUs for four bedrooms. The application, uh, the applicant owns five separate properties in Front Royal, including the Elm Street address noted as their primary dress, as well as three properties in Rappahannock, including two on Headwaters Road.
I take exception to this. I mean, it does, we're not here to go over her financial statement.
I am in the middle of my public comment.
We are not here, but it takes.
Madam Chair, may I conven, continue my public comment?
This has nothing relevant to the application. What she owns is, is not relevant to the application. It's not relevant.
I think we, this is.
It's no different than if she saw her get out.
I'm speaking to the application, Madam Chair.
Well, she will speak to the application, not to what she owns in different counties and different places. That's not.
My testimony is my testimony. Yet, there will be, there will be a point for everybody, Madam Chair, point of order.
There's, there's an opportunity, I think, for everyone to speak in a public hearing, and it seems to be the most slippery slope, um, that public officials can get into is by interfering too much with public comment in this day and age. And that is to say that we, as commissioners, also have our opinions, and I will certainly look back and, and take your comments into account, and ask for any further comments you may have later in the meeting, Mr. Henry. Thank you.
The applicant owns five separate properties in Front Royal, including the Elm Street address noted as their primary dress, as well as three properties in Rappahannock, including two on Headwaters Road. Please consider, the property deed was recorded September thirteenth of twenty-four, three days later, on September sixteenth, it was listed for rent at twenty-nine hundred a month. Three weeks later, on October eighth, the rental listing was removed. November twenty-second of twenty-four, the site and soil evaluation report was done. A month later, the application for the four-bedroom drain field was submitted. On January twenty-ninth, VDH issued the drain field construction permit, and then on March thirteenth, the application for the ADU was submitted. On page twenty-seven, uh, in the box titled "All Applicants", uh, the question is, is this property intended to serve as your primary residence? And it is marked "No". It bears repeating, the special exception is just that. It is special, and it is an exception, and an ADU is not a byright use. The special exception provision for an ADU is not intended to be used as an end drawn around our zoning ordinance and density requirements. This should not be a mechanism utilized for investment purposes, but rather based on a demonstrated justification for family need. I suggest the application is, at best premature. If the applicant intends for this property to be her primary legal residence with a separate accessory space for her daughter to reside in, then there should be a requirement that it be her current legal primary residence of record before the ADU application is considered. The other issues regarding intended number of bedrooms, total square footage that exceeds the ordinance, and the separate entrance questions are problematic. Additionally, on page twenty-three, the OSB report mentions an existing well that is not visible, that has been replaced by the newer well, but that there was no record that the older existing well was properly abandoned. The question of the proper abandonment should be addressed. We, as a county, should be mindful, um, of permitting special exceptions on top of special exceptions. There have been a growing number of situations where a special exception has been granted, and then down the road, someone comes back for another special exception for expansion or change of use on the same property. If a property receives a special exception for an ADU, the intent of which should be to serve just a viable family need, that ADU should not be eligible to, uh, then be converted to a tourist home. We've had a fairly recent example of this. So, in light of all this, I would urge the planning commission to recommend denial of this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I just? Let me hear from you first, and then I'll hear from you next, Anita, I'm sorry.
Um, this is my daughter.
Yes, ma'am, she's asked to be recognized, and as the chairman, I have recognized her daughter now has the floor.
Thank you, sorry, we are not used to these meetings. First of all, the one thing is, uh, that she said that was false in her statement is just about the five properties. She doesn't have five properties in Front Royal, but she does have properties on the road that we purchased. Headwaters, that we purchased this property on. We, my goal is to move out there with her. We can't move out there. I love my mom, but right now, I don't want to be on this. I'd like a little privacy off to the side, so we can't move there until we complete the, the project. And so, that's why we're still living in our residences in Front Royal.
Very good.
So, just wanted to clarify.
Anita?
Anita Ramos, Hampton District. When I read this application, the first thing that jumped out at me was the size of the building. After going through building something here in Rappahannock County, and being very careful about it, and also submitting nice plans rather than just a little drawing, which is highly inadequate in my mind, and is it three bedrooms, is it two bedrooms and an office? I can't tell, there's no telling how big anything is. They have to, first of all, figure out how to make it twelve hundred square feet, that's their problem. Not this group, and it's not just, oh, it's this big, so what? That's, that's the biggest thing that hit me right away. Ms. Hunt has hit a whole lot of other things, and I gotta say, I agree, and I wonder about, how far that building is from the edge of the property. Is there, what's the setback for a, a, um, residence? And that's, that's another thing that struck me when I looked at it, but the size right off, I mean, I was going through it, and without even doing the math, I, I look at a, I've looked at a billion house plans. I'm not kidding, probably a billion. And the first thing I saw was, this seems like it's gotta be over twelve hundred square feet. So, did the math. That's, that's problem number one. They are also on the end of a, a road that I don't know if it's private, but I think some of it is. And who takes care of all that private road has been a big question to us all. And they're at the end, and so they're going to do the most damage if there's three-bedroom house and another three-bedroom house, both at the end, and now, you know, with the extra. So, that's, that's something that concerns me very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. I just wanted to say, as the applicant, you will have opportunity to speak once the public hearing has ended.
Mary Anthony, Jackson District. I am an appraiser and a Realtor, so I'm speaking from, you know, my professional opinion. I've been a Realtor for thirty-some years, and I've been an appraiser for forty-some years. So, I was wondering, I don't know the answer to this, but, um, to reduce a space from fifteen hundred to twelve hundred, you're talking about three hundred square feet, which would be something like three by ten, or one and a half by twenty. You know, so can you erect a wall, you know, one and a half feet, or, or whatever you want to do, to reduce the, uh, living area? That's, I think that's, now, as an appraiser, I normally measure the outside, outside of the space. So, I don't know if that's, um, legal to, you know, to switch to a gross living area. So, that is, that would be my comment on that.
Thank you. I think that's everybody, but is there anyone else that would like to speak on this application? Right, seeing no one else that would like to speak, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, we do.
Well, I have a picture of the other entrance.
Would you mind to use the microphone, please?
That, I had a new door put in, and I have a, there is a drive, a door that goes to the apartment above, the, this area above. So, and I also have an email where I, I take care of that road because the state road ends here, and my two little houses go above, and I have a receipt where I just spent, I think, seven thousand dollars to make sure that that, there's only one house above this house, and that, that's it. And I had the road fixed, because when it rained, it was rotten, and I got a guy that knew what he was doing come, and my neighbor up above me, John, he gave me two thousand, and I think I paid like six, and I got the road, you know, my private road fixed. Town, the, the town or the county doesn't come to this property at all. So, it's a three-bedroom house, which could hold, I guess, six people. It's just me and the, and, and her. So, there's not going to be anymore, any additional usage. And the garage, it's pretty huge, it's not fifty, it might be fifty-two feet outside to outside, inside to inside. It's fifty-one by twenty-seven, and then you have a four-foot area where those steps go down. I mean, you, I could block that off, and that would take off a hundred feet right there. But it's not fifty-two by twenty-eight, it's the structure. And then, if you'd like to see this door that, that does go to the back, and then I have a, uh, I have a receipt in my email where I fixed the road last year. So, I mean, the only thing I've done is improve that area.
Can I help you?
Can we just, can we just ask you a few questions?
I'm gonna help you a whole lot, okay? Where does the state road end up there on that, uh?
The state road ends.
Well, you can show us on this one, might not be so dangerous.
Just show me where the state road is.
Or the state road ends right, let's see. So, this time, I was trying to find the little white farmhouse, that my daughter, other daughter owns. Okay, state, state road ends right here.
And follow the road up to your house.
And it goes up here. It was, the house is, well, it goes up here, or no, it's here, this is the house, and this is how far, for.
Okay, that's your garage on the left.
This is all paved, this is all paved.
You got a picture of your garage on your phone, on your phone, on your phone.
Would you mind to show us the picture of your garage? That you have on your phone.
Oh, yeah, I can tell you. Look, I have a little phone, it's the old house.
Gotta get me this second dwelling, there's no cap.
Here's the door.
That was us.
And that, that building is already above it.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
But you want to see, and well, see, the reason, this house is all.
Nope, just want to see the garage.
I live on a three-story house, and this house is all one level. And there's a two-car garage attached to the house, and it's perfect, I'm sixty-nine, I'm, I'm, I can't do steps forever. And so, if you can go.
Did you, that you want to start up with that session?
Okay.
Okay.
First off, I'm gonna start off saying stuff. I apologize to you, okay? I apologize to you, because we have a public comment, and sometimes people go far beyond and say things they shouldn't say, and put their nose in tents that they shouldn't have their nose in the tents. So, I apologize to you, because there's nobody else to apologize. And I'll be man enough to say, I'm sorry that you got to suffer some things that you have to suffer, okay? And then we'll move on and say, your garage, do you understand what we say when they, you can only have twelve hundred square feet?
I do.
So, here's how you solve that problem. Upstairs, when you renovate this into a living area, you're basically doing, if this is fifteen hundred square feet, you're gonna have a three-hundred-square-foot attic. Now, that's gonna be studs, it, it's gonna be unfinished, it's gonna be cold, it's gonna be like an attic, okay? You're gonna have twelve hundred square feet up there, measured from the inside or the outside. Outside walls would be more conservative. So, you're gonna have twelve hundred square feet, and then you're gonna have the rest of it unfinished. No sheetrock, it's gonna be studs, so nobody can put their nose under your tent and, and ask about your unfinished areas. So, it's gonna be unfinished, you can store Christmas boxes in there, your suitcases, whatever, stuff like that, but unfinished. No carpet, no nothing, understand? That's how you get twelve hundred square feet. And then you're gonna have the steps coming downstairs, right? Because you're on the second floor. So, you're gonna bring your steps down, and you're gonna have an outside door there. You're gonna go outside, and that's your separate entrance, okay? Probably gonna have a wall to be code when you come down those steps, so you come out, you go out. So, that's how you make all of this stuff legal, all right? Now, the code says, how many bedrooms and baths can she have in twelve hundred square feet?
It, it just limits the ADU to twelve hundred square feet.
So, we don't care how many bedrooms you have, because we're not the camel that's gonna get into your house and look and count your bedrooms. So, you got twelve hundred square feet to do a living area that suits your daughter. Now, thank you very much, you have eight acres there, that's zoned village residential. Early in this application, we had, early in tonight, we had an application of a hundred fifty-five acres that was doing an ADU. Did you notice that we didn't pay very much attention to that? Got passed really quick. One of the reasons why it had a hundred fifty-five acres, and it could have all kinds of things on there. Now, you have a very favorable zoning where you, where that property is, and that village residential, what's it called?
Village residential.
You could have a lot of houses there, but you have your house, and your daughter's gonna have a living area there. And maybe if the road conditions were looked at, you could have a lot more lots there, but we don't, we're not looking at that. So, your proposed use here is minor for my standpoint, because you've got an existing building you're gonna use, and you're, you're not about the same age, I guess. And, you know, you want a single-level house, so it's gonna work out nice for y'all, and y'all get this worked out. So, uh, you can have how, how many beds when you want, and it all works out good. But you need to have come back, get Michelle a drawing, to show how, where you're gonna have this three-hundred-square-foot attic area, and that will take care of the situation. It appears you have, uh, well, appears you have a septic, and appears that's all gonna be okay. So, in terms of future uses, our ordinance says, uh, we passed something earlier where if you bought a property, you can't have a tourist home for two years, right? In what you bought. So, we're doing this accessory, so we're probably gonna put a, something on this condition that I don't agree that you can't have, ever have a rental, uh, Airbnb or whatever in this unit. I think if your daughter lives there five years, ten years, or whatever, at some point in time, she's no longer there, I think you probably have a right to do something else there. So, I'm not gonna get into ten years down the road, I don't want to do that. So, that's where I'm at, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I would like to say one more thing, I don't own five properties in Front Royal.
Mom, I already told them that.
I own one house, the one I live in.
I, I think sometimes, I hope people understand that our, our position as government officials is that we really need to let people have their freedom of speech.
Yes.
Whether we agree with it wholeheartedly, disagree with it wholeheartedly, think it's entirely appropriate, think it's entirely inappropriate, we get ourselves into trouble if we don't let the public speak.
Yes.
So, and I've sat through all kinds of, of comments, I've felt all kinds of ways about, but, you know, we still need to. And at the end of the day, what people say is a reflection on them, and that, that's all there is to it. So, I appreciate all. Sure, usually, this goes the opposite way, usually, we ask you questions, but you're welcome to ask us questions.
That stairway coming up, it's four feet, and if I took, like, another foot off of it and made it five feet, and made it just go away, did a straight wall, that might give me, I don't know, I'd have to do the math.
It ain't gonna give you the, it ain't gonna give you, I call it, three hundred square feet.
Mom, he gave you the blueprint, the, the attic?
No, the attic, there is an attic on top of that.
Listen, ma'am, listen, listen. You got, your fifteen hundred square foot is this page right here. You're gonna cut off three hundred square feet, okay? That's how it works, we don't care about the attic above your head, it's the attic on that floor, okay? Right?
I can do this.
Just make it, make it into storage space.
It's not hard, it's not hard.
Unfinished storage space.
I can do that.
Michelle, I think can help you, I'm happy to come into her office and help you understand it.
She was really helpful.
I'm happy to come in and help you understand more, okay? Mr. Schuler, he lives up, he's one of your neighbors here on the hill.
She's landed gentry up there with eight acres.
He's got some great comments for you, too.
Would you like to add anything, Mr. Schuler?
The, when you're, when you're looking at the garage, and you got one, two, three, four garage doors, the stairs are on which side?
On the left side.
The left side, so they go up. Now, the door you were showing us earlier, that's on the back?
That's on the back side.
Yeah, it's built into the ground like this.
The, the, the garage is on, on the, behind is ground level. It's, underneath, it's the garage. So, that driveway I was telling you, that the guy told me I already had, that driveway goes right up to that back door.
Oh, good, that's where you want it to be, because that's gonna be your entrance for the living quarter. And then the other is your entrance for your unfinished storage.
That, that driveway is just kind of hard to see in the pictures, I was trying to figure out.
The driveway in front of the garage, it's all paved, it could use a little. It could use a little, you know, a little help. Which I, I take care of my stuff once I get it.
Properties in Front Royal, too?
Well, I used to have a lot of them, but divorces and different things. I got one house, and my ones in Chester Gap, that's it. So my other daughter lives below in the farmhouse, and...
Is this your older daughter?
This is my oldest. She's gonna go up above.
Yeah, I think it's beautiful. I live in what we call the family compound.
That's what it was called.
Compound.
Yes.
A compound.
And I think it's great.
Albert Wines, who built all that stuff, he built it all.
Is that Mr. Wines?
Albert Wines.
Mr. Wines?
Yeah. And his son-in-law used to keep the road nice, and then he sold the only one house above. He sold it, and then I had to take over the road. It's not easy.
I'm sure you're a very good neighbor.
I don't think that...
Brian, did you have anything to add?
No, I just wondered what the next step is. Does she have to come back with the walls built and...
How would you like it to be conditioned?
Did you haven't heard from Mr. Atkins?
Oh.
And Miss Ritter yet? I think Mr. White's on, I think he's awake yet. Mr. White, you're out there.
He's still there.
Haven't heard from him.
And then I have my head on.
I'm sorry. Sorry. Your image is so small, it's harder to see on the screen.
I was gonna drive in, and it looked like he was moving.
We should've just made you a co-host.
Since you opened it, now that's too much responsibility. But I guess, and I'm sorry, maybe disadvantaged, I didn't see some of the previous discussion, but is there any, I feel like, Mr. Henry, there's been great discussion about the separate entrance requirement and this twelve-hundred-square-foot requirement, so I'm very satisfied by that. It looks from the, it looks from the plan that the house is definitely within the two-hundred feet linear distance. It's also a requirement.
True.
Yes, yes.
Okay. And then I think the only thing that really hasn't been fully discussed, and I was scrambling a little bit to figure out what exactly the requirement is, but to the point raised earlier, an accessory dwelling unit is expected to be accessory to something. And in this case, presumably, is accessory to a primary dwelling. And I agree with the comments that, you know, we've gotten rid of requirements for who can be in that dwelling. We've gotten rid of family or, you know, guests and other friends. We just made it the customary dwelling unit. But I do still think there is some requirement that this be accessory to another unit, a primary residence use. Because the concern I'm getting at is, I don't, I don't think we want to just have this be a means of creating two independent rental properties. Whether that happened down the road or not, I agree, we can't really control. But for our purposes here, I do think we need to be pretty clear that one is the primary residence, and the other is accessory dwelling unit to that primary residence by whatever means our ordinance allows. So those are my addition comments.
Thank you.
I don't know if it matters, but she's on the D. I couldn't get along without her. It's her house, too.
I know, but they're, it's currently not the primary residence.
We're just trying to make it through so we hear from all of the members of the commission.
I think, honestly, I think we need a drawing of how they're gonna do it before we approve. And the issue of the primary residence, I think, is problematic.
I'm trying to draw.
So, could I, could I be some clearer part of my comment?
Yes.
Because my comment is less about who is in it, and more about the designation of one of the structures being a primary dwelling unit, and the other being accessory to that, so that they are not just completely independent of one another.
I think, and this is...
That's the case. That's what, that's the, that would give us the ability down the road to understand what we created here.
I think by virtue of square footage, the other, the house that's currently used as the home is the primary residence, and this is the ADU, because the primary residence exceeds twelve hundred square feet. If the primary residence was less than twelve hundred square feet, then we could switch, and this could be, stay fifteen hundred square feet, and the other could become the ADU.
I'm sorry, but that doesn't address the concern of understand which one is the secondary. But, but the fact is, accessory implies accessory to something. And it's, and you could also use that logic to say, well, this is the small one, and this is the large one. The point is, the accessory is supportive of the primary. They're not just two different independent units. So I, again, I don't know how this, that, I don't know how we ended up wording that in the ordinance, but I do believe there is language to that effect in some way. And I don't care who lives in it. I just wanna make sure that whatever we do designates the larger as the primary, and the accessory to being accessory to the primary.
Gary, we will absolutely, Gary, we will absolutely do that. Guarantee it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Ritter?
You know, if, if the, if the person who is asking for the ADU is not residing there, I read, I read primary residence as primary residence of the person who's the applicant.
So she needs to move in first?
That's my, that's my read.
For how long?
One day? I don't know. It has to be...
I could live with, I could live with it being conditional. You know, I think we did this with that accessory unit back in, back near Rock Hills, where we said, well, you can't have the secondary until the primary is established. So I know that it needs to be done before the application is, is forwarded. But I think it needs to be done as a condition of, of the ultimate use of the property.
Do you have this question?
Yes.
When do you think you'll be moving to the brick house?
When we were able to get the construction complete, which it sounds like.
I'm sorry, that I have to, she's going first, because...
No. I cannot move in until you move in, is what they're saying. We cannot begin, what they're saying now is, we cannot begin construction until you are living in the main house.
I just wanna know, right this moment, what is the plan for you? Where are you living now?
I live on Main Street in Buffalo.
Okay. And you're gonna move to Chester Gap in this brick house?
I want to, but not, yes.
But you don't wanna move there until she's living?
Until she gets up there.
Because she's gonna kinda be your overseer, right?
Well, also, also...
She is already, but yeah.
Also, offsetting some of her mortgage and helping her a little bit. She's on social security.
Yep, yep. Okay. And so that's gonna be four, five, six months down the road.
Well, I'm gonna have to get my building permit first, and then I can whiz through it once that happens. I could get her up there in four or five months.
How often do you go over there?
Hmm, I don't go there that much. I do on those two little houses, and I have these great renters, and they do the pay house. The only time I go up is if something wrong, and I run out of there. I got the ruts out of the road. I do a lot of stuff. I have, have other people do it, obviously, but, you know, I gotta check on things. The lady that's there was complaining, because when I had that door put in, they left a mess. And she was like, I shouldn't have to go around this, so I went right up and cleaned it up.
When you move over there, you're gonna put a mailbox up and get your mail there? You're gonna still get your mail some...
The mail comes at the foot of the hill, because all the mailboxes are in front of them.
But you're gonna, you're gonna put a mailbox up, or you're gonna still get your mail in Front Royal?
Oh, no, no. I'm gonna sell my house in Front Royal.
Okay. But you're gonna have, put a mailbox up?
We don't have mailboxes in front of our houses on water, on...
It's just one big unit.
It's one big box.
And it has blocks on it, I bet, doesn't it? Doesn't it?
Yeah.
So how about, how about within thirty days, you get a mailbox that has your address on it, and get your mail over there showing us your intent to move there? How about that? That shows your intent to go, to move there. And start, get a mailbox there, your address, and show us that you, that's your intent to do it, and you got...
I already have one.
You got a mailbox there?
It's, it's in that box with my thing on it.
Yeah, we got one. She's already established residency there. So there's our residency that she's established.
Yeah, to be clear, to be clear, the accessory dwelling unit does not have to be to a primary residence. We have tons of accessory dwelling units in Appahannock County to second homes. So I, I agree with Mr. Henry. I just think we, I think we can manage this in some way.
I think it's only, I think the only thing we gotta manage is just simply have a floor plan of showing twelve hundred square feet, and I think everything else is okay. And I think you can...
I can do that.
Okay. I think that's all we really, maybe we could beat this thing around the merry-go-round to eleven o'clock, but it comes down to twelve hundred square feet, and, and the access on the door. That's all we're talking about. Everything else is, is there. You got the both applicants here, really, that own the property. We know what they're gonna do. I don't, I have no doubt that this is what's gonna happen. I'm not looking at a couple slip people from Fairfax here, okay?
No, I'm gonna follow through some windows.
Good.
Mr. Atkins, did you have anything?
No, nothing.
Mr. Schuler, would you be able to motion, please?
I'd love to.
Good.
Um, pending, I make that condition that they provide a sketch. I recommend this application for approval. However, you must submit a drawing of how you intend to mitigate the twelve-hundred-foot requirement.
Submit...
They have an ex, they have an outside door already.
In other conditions, are we meeting requirements of accessory dwelling?
The other staff recommended condition is that no future application for a tourist home will be granted.
Ever?
That's what the staff recommendation says.
Is there any precedent for that? I don't, I don't believe, I don't believe there is, and I'm not even sure we can do that. And if they come back, the point of another special exception is, we say, sorry, this was an accessory dwelling unit. We're not gonna approve, I may repeat here, so I don't, I don't know. That strikes me as maybe a step too far.
You mean Airbnb? Was that?
Yeah, that's what a tourist unit is, that we would use it. We can't use it for Airbnb.
Come on, try that.
Well, we have a motion, Mr. Schuler. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Ritter. Is there any further discussion?
And this motion is simply to the twelve-hundred-square-foot requirements, access and those issues, there's no included in that motion, nothing for a prohibition against a future...
Tourist home.
Tourist home.
Right.
Correct. Okay. I second that. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's a day. You've heard it.
Mrs. Ritter, yeah, sure.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. White. So you're all set to see at the Board of Supervisors, set in July? Michelle?
Yes, ma'am.
We'll see you at the July meeting of the Board of Supervisors.
Now, listen. Bring that drawing forward that, as soon as you can do it. You come in, and you get that drawing to Michelle. Daughter, you get your mama in there, and get that thing down to twelve hundred square foot, and the dress is right. I hate to be willing to accept photographs of studs up, too.
Yeah.
And we want, yeah, okay?
Looking forward to seeing you again in July.
It's simple.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Y'all have a good night. I didn't get a hug. Y'all have a good night. I say...
That was so nice of her. I want a daughter like that.
Me, too. All right. That takes us to the public comment portion of the evening. Anyone that would like to speak on any number of topics is welcome to speak at this time.
Mary Anthony Jackson District. I wanna thank everyone who used their microphone, because those who didn't made it hard for me to hear what they were saying. Thank you for the others that I could hear well. And so I wanted to ask a question. Am I able to comment on, on, uh, Ramil Connie? Or is that closed? I, I didn't realize what the rules are on terms of public comment. Was that the last section?
She's gonna ask to come back next month with some additional information.
So, so I cannot, she was in section D.
You're welcome to speak to the application at this time.
At that time?
You may speak now.
Oh, okay. That's, that's what I wanted to ask.
On anything you'd like.
Okay, fantastic. I didn't know if it was closed, and I missed the opportunity. So I wanted to say that, um, that, saying that there's a lot of land available where you could have a residential house, ag, I mean, really doesn't qualify for most people, because it's very, very expensive. So, you know, buying that house is a lot different from buying some, ag would take, I don't know, what, sixty percent of the land out of, whatever. And I'm wondering if anybody saw the property. Again, I'll say I've been a realtor for decades, and if you were to rate it on a score of condition, very good, good, fair, or poor, it would be rated poor. And so it's just a huge project for a commercial venture to take that on, even. It's, most of those businesses are very small. They're sort of, I wanna say, almost ephemeral. And, and, you know, people come in, they try to make a go, and, you know, to invest like a couple hundred thousand in the infrastructure. So I feel like, you know, it would be lucky to have somebody come and convert it. And thirdly, there's something to be said for the charm of, you know, having, you know, a low-key usage of a residential property. So I just think, you know, from aesthetics, that I would prefer to see it as a cute residential property. And then it keeps the parking problems solved, and if someone else moves in and decides to have the business there. So I, I would say that I think there are some things to consider. Also, while we were sitting here, I didn't have the address, but I did look up the FEMA map on, on the phone. There's a, there's an app for it, but I wasn't using that. I just Googled flood map of Sperryville. So it, it, you can, you know, that can be checked pretty easily. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak? Ladies? Okay. I think that's everybody, so I'll close public comment, and we'll move on to the transient lodging amendments.
Madam Chair, I have one request. This is like apropos, this schedule for the count plan?
Yes.
Which is, the one in Flint Hill is scheduled for a time when I'm not gonna be here, and I'm wondering if we could move that time to another month?
We probably can.
When was this scheduled?
It's six fifteen.
Six sixteen.
Um, it seems like maybe, maybe that would be an opportunity to do the Washington?
Yeah, that's what it is.
Visit, if you think that date would work for you, Mr. Henry?
That probably so.
Okay. And we've got the FOIA notices out, or if we have, we need to change, we need to recognize the change in form?
Yeah.
For the, for the location.
Do we have a date we want to schedule one for Flint Hill?
How does everybody feel? Should we double down in July and try and get another one in?
I could do it later. I'm just away that, you know, that week there.
So we could do it later in June?
Yeah.
Like toward the end of June? On a Monday evening? It's the last Monday in June.
The thirtieth?
I could do it any, any, the twenty-third or the thirtieth, if we're looking at Mondays.
Are you changing the sixteenth to Washington first?
Yes. And there will be an email to confirm. And then do we think, is everyone available for the 30th for Flint Hill?
Great, I, that'd be great.
Worth a June.
Yes.
I really appreciate that.
I believe, Madam Chair, that I would be equally unavailable for all the updates.
Okay. We'll, we'll miss you terribly, Gary, but we will, we will try to get this knocked out. Knowing that it's important work. Knowing that it's important work to move this complan along. So I, does that seem like it will work for everybody?
That's great.
Mr. Atkins, will that work for you?
I think so.
All right, sounds good. That takes us back to the transient lodging amendments. Michelle, if I remember correctly, where we left this is the, the Board of Supervisors was to give feedback on what recreational vehicles should be allowed. And they said that they were fine with recreational vehicles slash trailers.
Yes.
And so.
Option one on the screen.
Yes, so, um, so there's that guidance from the Board of Supervisors. If you don't mind, that would be great.
Okay, perfect. Another topic for the board was the clarification of the term or the definition of tourist home. Mr. Carney suggested it seemed okay for a tourist home to coexist in the same structure with a resident and dwelling. The other board members agreed. The board suggested a tourist home should be allowed in the same structure where there's a by right retail open. In no case should there be more than one tourist home in the same structure. Another suggestion was made to the term, not to the term, to the lodging uses, um, that maybe that planning commission should take a look at under tourist homes and 17066 Code 4. And Ag and commercial zones, the minimum acres provided for tourist homes and bed and breakfast shall be 10 acres and 20 acres and put the period there and delete any, um, the language regarding the waiver. If it's a pay grade, it's part of the state primary secondary.
Is there a reason for that?
I have to say, I think the reason is probably that we've never done it. And if we haven't done it so far.
We haven't done. There's lots of things we haven't done.
I know, but we have had applications that have requested it, but we have been reluctant to grant them.
Some of us have tried.
Well, I have to say, I, I didn't particularly agree with that last bit and I don't have any problem with leaving it in there. The other, the other pieces were, the first piece regarding the, the trailers was specifically what we had asked for guidance on. And then I think it's sort of like, you know, dominoes. You ask for one question and that leads to another question. And then you may get a lot more feedback than you had anticipated.
Well, it sounds like somebody was listening to him when he said that people in Richmond are forcing you to live in the house that you're Airbnb in.
And there are other plans that, that are, that we hear of in the county where, um, you know, there, there are contemplated multiple, multiple rental units in one structure with no onsite supervision. And I think that's a concern of the board that we want to prevent that sort of unfettered, unsupervised, um, short-term rental permitting in the county.
So when we, I believe when we first came up with that distinction, it's kind of ironic to me that we're using Airbnb breakfast to define tourist home when we have a tourist home, when we have a bed and breakfast. So it seems like it migrated a bit. The whole point of the tourist home was the traditional, you rent the whole house. And when you rent part of it, it was a bed and breakfast. I think we've gotten kind of wrapped up a little bit in whether or not food services provided because generally, I'm not sure that anybody's providing food service anymore. So I might respectfully suggest that instead of messing with the definition of tourist home, maybe mess with the definition of bed and breakfast since all we're doing in an Airbnb is putting an air in front of it.
Well, and I think there were a few other points that the board had feedback on too, which I, of which I reminded Mr. Curry earlier today. So we may get some additional details as he works through the minutes. But one of the points was what we discussed earlier with an accessory dwelling unit. In other words, not layering special exception permits that when, when you receive a, an approval for an ADU, that, that would disqualify you from submitting that, that same space to be used as a short-term rental.
Yeah.
So in other words, you're not continuously pushing the envelope for the next special exception.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I would love to hear a lawyer's explanation of that because that strikes me as pushing an envelope of future uses that I don't, will never be touched on in the board.
Well, I think the distinction was that, say, that this short-term rental that we recommended approval for on the Vineyard in Wakefield District was, was a by right use in that building. That was therefore we all deemed compatible with the special exception permit because what they were already doing in, in that endeavor was all by right. So the, the more special exceptions you, you layer, it seems like the more and more challenging the, the bar would be to overcome.
I guess the scenario that I'm struggling with a little is what if they abandon, you know, one special exception? You know, either, you know, at the time or well in advance. It just seems like we're getting into sort of regulating future activities to, to a degree that is really difficult. So I just feel like I get the concept, but I feel like there's some implementation challenges there.
That's an interesting point. I didn't think about the possibility of them abandoning it, but I think that is a, poses a whole nother question. So I, I don't know how much you all want to take this on this evening or if you want staff to draft the comments we received back from the board. It sounds like we want to leave the provided however language in there for the, the fourth enumerated item. And then ask staff to work out the language that Mr. Carney proposed or refine the, the language in terms of it being more, making it more specific as to being just one tourist home in, in a structure and it only being allowed in compat, incompatible with being inhabited by the owner, a resident-owned dwelling. Are you okay with us just working on it and bringing back language?
How about next month?
Yeah, I, I certainly.
How about next month when we start off our agenda? Have this at the beginning?
Well, I think we have a couple of things to finish up tonight that will be challenging next month. Although I do anticipate it will go a lot quicker. Is it, how does our agenda look for next month?
We have quite a few complains speakers. Right now it's only two public hearings.
In addition to the ones that we tabled tonight or the one we tabled tonight?
In addition.
Okay.
How complicated are they just?
Actually. So we have two.
Those are two we tabled.
We have two tables that will be heard next month. We have two new applications that will be heard for the first time.
What are they? Are they Airbnb's or are they tourist homes or something different?
Accessory dwelling unit and a cottage industry.
Oh, is it the Leach application?
Yes. And then we need to schedule the fee schedule for public hearing for next month for the planning commission.
I do understand that it's challenging to do this work in conjunction with the other work that we're doing. Do you think we need a, a separate work session?
I got all kinds of free time now.
I'm just trying to understand, understand what the, what the commission would like to do. I have a very boring life. I'm available most evenings and I'm, I'm happy to participate in work sessions if that is.
I think June's probably a good month. July, August probably bad months.
Okay.
June's better than July in office.
Maybe we can circulate a Google poll and figure out some dates that work.
So what we need to be clarifying is whether or not, the, the issue that Mr. Carney brought up about residential.
It was in relation to the question that came up from the definition of what's, what's compatible? What, if anything, would you consider to be compatible with a tourist home in the same structure?
Right.
And the, the one thing that we all seemed to agree on was that it would be okay for the tourist home to coexist with the resident owning the building and the resident being there to supervise the guests. And that that seems sensible and compatible, but that having like a renter and a short-term tourist rental and, you know, any other combination may be not so sensible.
I'm confused.
What?
It is confusing. Well, then you have to make sure.
The fact is you want to have somebody there holding your hand. But also it'd be nice to know that there's somebody in the area.
You don't have to have somebody there. It's just that that would be the only way it could be more than just the standalone rental. Would be as if the owner was residing in, in the same building.
So I, I believe we contemplated this sort of lesser standard or less restrictive use. In fact, I think there was some consideration of allowing it to be by right in certain cases if it was a owner occupied. So I do think we, I'm not sure what, how many commissions configured at the time. But I do believe we did give this some consideration once before. I, I don't, you know, I don't have all committed an agreement, but it is a topic that we've talked about.
All right, well, it sounds like we'll, we'll work on setting aside some work session time to work on this. And then also the events sponsored by nonprofit organizations. There was a lot of information there. I'm not sure how everyone feels. I'd be more inclined to keep it simple.
Me too. I like to, I think it was, was it Warren Carey? One day.
That looks reasonable. I went back and checked a few over today and I kind of agree that, I thought the ones toward the bottom of the list were better, like Madison. Because I, I remember reading through them all and as I went through, I thought they, they were definitely more user-friendly.
More likely to be complied with.
Yeah. All right, fee schedule, new business. So we will take those up next month for a public hearing. You don't need any action from us on that, Mrs. Summers.
Do you all agree that I can do anything that's scheduled?
I would defer to the BOS on that one.
Is it true we have not dealt with a tourist home application since February?
Maybe.
That's amazing.
Maybe.
People got tired.
Seems like ADUs are the big now.
What's going on, Al? I'm on the pulse of that stuff. People travel less. Yeah. Using their houses more themselves. And plus it's a pain in the ass. I mean, excuse me, but they realize it's a pain.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, that's what everybody I know has one, no longer exists.
My son has one and, you know, it's, you, you gotta be on your A-game all the time, all the time, yeah, all the time.
I wonder somewhat if there's a saturation too. Seems like there's so, so many.
A lot of people came into Bryce Mountain and bought properties back there during COVID. They were reasonable and the numbers made sense. And, and they're, they're pitched out now, you know, their, their business plan fell apart and, you know, they're not generating enough sales. You know, it seems to be a little, some are a contraction. Other areas are, you know, good.
Right. That takes us to roundtable discussion. Does anyone have anything?
I'll bring up time shares another time.
I'm just, I'm just, I think the nice discussion was again, very good. It was that we didn't all agree, we worked through things. And I just want to commend my fellow commissioners and you, Madam Chair, for working us through that. That was not easy. I was a little surprised by how easy they weren't. But, you know, I think, I think my fellow commissioners were happy.
Thank you, Mr. Light. Anybody else? Thank you for joining us.
So I, I want to say this. Now, when we have public speakers, you know, there's a boundary that you can go to, but you can't cross. You know, and, you know, you get into the same things, you know, that fair housing, you know, racial, familiar status, all these things. And, you know, and, and I think, you know, people do have a right to come up and say something and it's pertinent to, you know, the application at hand. But when they get off track materially, you know, they gotta be reined in because it's, it's not correct. And it's not what should be allowed in a public hearing. It should be relevant items to the applicant, only application that we have.
Although if it were true that she owned a number of properties up there, it increases the possibility that there, this might not be her residence or this might not be what she, you know, it's not really gonna be an ADU. I mean, that, that, that's a possible inference.
Well, you know, the fact that she owns, you know, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, I, I, you know, it doesn't really matter. I mean, there's people came in here tonight that are worth millions and millions of dollars. And they have all type of investments in the county, outside the county, everything. And, and, you know, that's not relevant, you know? What, what we have on, on applications was relevant. And, um, and we, this fit into what they were doing tonight. And I just, I'm not gonna sit back and, and go straight like that. It's not correct.
Well, I run the hearings as I understand best too from FOIA and in conjunction with the guidance we've received as board members from our county attorney. And I do the best I can with, with the guidance as I understand.
Well, we had the people's application for Parkway up in Sperryville some years ago. You know, when they, they wanted to turn that into rentals. And people got up and said, you know, we don't want that type of people, that type of people in Appahannock. I just shriveled, you know? That's not, you know.
People say, oh.
They need, we need to have a standard, so we just have to. Like they were saying in Warren, about veterans. Anyway, that's all I.
Yeah, well, I think, well, you're, just, just, I, I think for the BZA, you can say that because it's closer to a judicial hearing. It's, there's material evidence and there's not, I don't know about a public hearing.
How about the anytime we're near the same standard? You know, to me, the point of relevance is always at play. It's always, I think, that show that's discretion to keep the comments relevant. I would argue though that the way the conversation was like, the interruption came before the, the commenter really had an opportunity to make the point about the relevance. It was kind of along the preamble, but I think it was to the point of, you know, is this really a primary residence? Is this really a secondary or is this just a rental unit? So in this case, I, I think while it may have been a little winding and included in the details, it was sort of relevant to the application in my view.
All right, well, I always appreciate everybody's good thoughts and ability to cooperate and get these applications vetted. And I know the Board of Supervisors appreciates it. And I know the Board of Supervisors appreciates it very much too, all the work we do here. I might not convey that often, often enough, but they do very much appreciate the hard work that we do on their behalf, so that it makes the review of these applications once the board receives them so much simpler. So thank you for all your hard work. And I hope everybody has a, a good evening.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
So do.
A second? Thank you very much. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Yes, sir.